I'll call the Monday, April 26th, 2021, meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. I'll first read the remote participation statute we're working under pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in any one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation. To the greatest extent possible, we strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible. Following the same, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. And I'll now do a roll call of planning board members. I'm Richard Escholus, chairman. Jeff?
Jeff Stafford, member, yeah.
Greg? He's here. Norman?
Norman LeBlanc, member.
Roger?
Number.
Okay, Dale?
I'm here.
And Christine? Christine? Hello?
Here.
Thank you. Okay.
Yep, I'm here. Can you, can you hear me? Yeah?
Yep, yep, all set. Thank you. Okay, time being 7:05, we have a public hearing, Seven Founders Court. And I don't know, did you give me a copy of that, Mary? I didn't keep it if you gave it to me early on. Maybe I'll have Mary read it. Mary, could you read the public hearing notice? You're muted, Mary.
Alrighty, we'll start again.
Okay, sorry.
Pursuant to the provisions of chapters 66 and 67 of the Oxford bylaw, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom application on Monday, April 26th, 2021, at 7:05 PM on stormwater management and land disturbance permit applications submitted by the applicant, Ronald Caldwell Jr., to level the backyard to create usable yard space and installation of a controlled slope with clean fill and reinforced turf for property owned by the applicant located at Seven Founders Court, Oxford, Mass., Access map 29A, parcel C 51.31. The application and plan and supporting documentation may be viewed in the office of the town clerk or the land management department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, date, and time designated or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the planning board. All right, that's the public hearing notice.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
We do have some emails here. Actually, we've got a, we got a email of pictures from the abutter, Steve Cannon. He, he, he sent a bunch of pictures showing the way the thing looks in the ground. And what I look like, this, the hill continues down into his yard, maybe, or the yard behind him. I don't know. There's, there's a, there's all, it's down at a lower gradient. And... The other email I got was from dated April 26th, 2021, to the Planning Board from Jared Duval, the DPW director, Seven Founders Court, for the land disturbance stormwater management application review. Okay, and I'll read that for the record. In late January of this year, the DPW was informed of potential land disturbing activity at Seven Founders Court. Based on reports from the abutters, pre and post-construction photos and visual inspection, it was determined that a significant amount of fill was imported to the site to level off the backyard. Given the scale and scope of the work, it is determined the project triggered the town's local stormwater management and land disturbance bylaw. A letter was sent via certified mail on February 22nd, 2021, informing the homeowner of this bylaw violation. I met with the homeowner and contractor on March 5th, 2021, to discuss the work and advised them to submit an application with the land management office. Based on review of the limited materials received from the applicant, I offer the following comments for the board's consideration. One, the applicant did not submit an engineered plan, nor a stormwater report demonstrating post-development stormwater conditions, approximated pre-development conditions. In my opinion, since the work is already complete, the requiring of an engineered plan and stormwater report now is futile. The existing condition survey cannot be completed, therefore, there is no basis for comparison. However, this does not relieve the applicant from ensuring that there will be no detrimental impacts to abutting land as a result of the work. The DPW suggests close monitoring of the proposed work to ensure the abutters' interest in their property are preserved. Two, in coordination with the land management office, we recommend the following conditions be tied to permit approval if the board so decides. And one, based on construction, a construction plan and timeline shall be provided by the property owner or agent for review and approval by the director of public works or designee. Bullet, no, no work shall commence without approval by the director of public works or designee. Now the bullet, the director of public works or designee shall be allowed to inspect the work on-site during construction to ensure compliance with this approval and town bylaws. Now the bullet, any modifications to the construction plan and timeline will require approval by the director of public works or designee prior to any work starting. The director of public works or his designee shall determine if any work has been completed, that all work, that if all work has been completed to, in accordance with the approved construction plan, the property owner shall be responsible for all costs incurred by the project. The Department of Land Management shall be notified by the property owner or agent once the project is completed. And restoration of the tree buffer, the, the property owner shall restore all trees and plantings removed within the 20-foot tree buffer at the rear of the property within six months from the date of this approval. And post-construction, within the first 24 months of the date of the project completion and approval, the director of public works or his designee may determine if additional measures be required to mitigate stormwater runoff. The property owner shall be responsible, shall be responsible to make all changes at their expense. And I think that's everything. Jared, you want to inform the board of what, what you observed at the site?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So during that site visit, I met with the property owner. I met with their landscape contractor. You know, just to get, and actually, prior to this, I should say, I met with the abutter to the rear of the property. And at that time, there was about a foot of snow on the ground. So he allowed me, granted me permission to walk to the rear of his lot, just to witness, you know, from that vantage point, the work that had been done. And you could, you could see that there was a significant slope that was created. It was always a significant slope as well, and he, he noted that himself. And I think the, the pre-developed conditions or photos show as much. Another addition, though, was the extension of roof drain gutter or roof drain from the, the downspouts of the gutters that is now daylit from that slope. So that was evident even in snowy conditions. On March 5th, when I went there and visited it, it was, the site was free of snow, so it was easier to see what was going on. And they had essentially created a plateau in the backyard to extend and, and make it a usable backyard, and, and maybe say 20, 30 feet or so, and then created a slope, you know, on the backside of that, in which there is a pipe daylighting. They had erosion controls along the toe of the slope, you know, along the whole, I guess, rear property line of the property. But I, I expressed some concern that, one, the, the project, as our current bylaw stands, it would trigger our bylaw, and it should have gone through a certain process, which I explained to them. It requires an engineered plan, requires, you know, certain documents that the town can fully vet this project to make sure there's no impacts to abutters, or that things are going to change from, you know, pre-developed conditions. But I could tell them too, I, you know, I, we got into a discussion as to what the requirements may be, or what may need to change out there. And I kind of expressed to them, well, it's really not the town or the DPW's responsibility to sort of design this project for you. We did talk about certain BMPs or measures that could be taken, you know, such as a swale along the toe of that slope to really retain as much water as possible, just really to, to, to kind of keep everything captured on that site. So I, I think that the, the 3D rendering, that, that drawing that you may have seen from the applicant is sort of representing that. And again, this is, it's, it's now we're reviewing this retroactively, right? So Tony, Planning and Economic Development Director, Tony Sousa, myself, have talked about this quite a bit, as to what requirements we impose for this particular project. And, you know, I mentioned in the, in the memo, it's to, to require, to go back in time now and say, we're going to need an engineered plan and to do that evaluation, pre versus post-developed conditions. It's, it's a little late for that now, obviously. So I, I don't know that there's much to be gained from that. I, I think, in my opinion, going forward, if we are afforded the opportunity to closely monitor the work from here on out and to do that for an extended period of time, we've imposed that 24-month, we suggested that duration to sort of evaluate this project and how things perform out there. Then, then that's, that's kind of what we've arrived at as sort of a best case for this project, short of having the homeowner restore this to, to pre-develop conditions or something close to that. So... I guess I'll, I'll defer to the board and, and their, you know, however they want us to proceed with this, but those are our recommendations. You know, certainly, we want to be, we, we don't want to set a precedent either. I understand that, that these sort of projects can happen. And then after the fact, you know, we're, we're sort of lax, you know, on, on the folks that are undertaking this work without the prior approvals. But we, we think this is sort of a compromise in which we can ensure that, again, I think the biggest, biggest issue here is just making sure that there's no detriment to the abutters and their property. So I have not been out since to see, since, you know, from, in a storm event, to see if that pipe is, is, is discharging water. I'm assuming it, it has. I've not received any, you know, directly to this office, any additional complaints or any complaints from the abutter just yet. But that doesn't mean that, you know, in a good-sized rainstorm, that there wouldn't be issues with that. It's, it's tough to say.
Rich?
Yeah?
Jared, what, how, how does this deal with if, if the owners of this property go to sell it? And now, the, the plan is, there is no site plan of the changes or anything like that. Who, who's responsible after? Say they sell the house in a year or two years. And who's responsible for what's been done if there's no plans showing it?
Well, I mean, I guess it's, we, we've sort of talked about this, right, with the, I mean, we'll get to talking about this later, obviously, with the new bylaw. But I think we're having this issue with, with other projects that even went through the process when we're not having an O and M plan recorded. And there's, you know, once someone moves on and a new owner comes in, there's, that, that responsibility is sort of gray, you know? Who, who owns what, or what the responsibilities are. So in this particular case, you know, my understanding would be that the work is done, whoever's buying that house with any sort of, with no plan that, or prior application that had been submitted, let's say, it would be none the wiser, I guess.
Yeah. Okay.
That's why, at the very least, obviously, we're having them go through this process now, retroactively. At least it's on record.
And what, what size trees have to be restored back there?
It was tough for me to tell exactly the, the scale of clearing, and I know some of the pictures may be evident. To, to me, it seemed like they were smaller, you know, sampling-sized trees that were taken down within that buffer. That came to light afterwards. I think, Mr. Chairman, I think you had actually tipped us off to that requirement in that, that subdivision out there. And, and Tony shared that information to me, so that was unbeknownst to me. But it, it does look like they're smaller-sized trees, for the most part, from what I could tell. I mean, there's some very large pine trees there that were, were left, so there's still a buffer. To what extent, and I'm, again, this is not having the opportunity to have reviewed this project before. It, it, it's tough to say. And I don't know if there was a true 20-foot buffer of trees there before either. You know, maybe the, the applicant can speak to that and take him for his word. I just know from what I witnessed out there myself and the pictures that were sent to our office, it looked like smaller-sized trees.
Okay.
Well, my only, my only comment on this project is Seven Founders Court is a, is a pretty recent development. It's, uh... I don't know, maybe 15 years ago? I don't know. Time, time slips by on my account, but the bottom line is, I think they had to go through stormwater management. And I don't know if the town has the previous plan. And I know they would have had to meet, post, would have had to meet build-out at that time. And I, I, I understand what you're saying. You don't know what it was previously now that it's, now that it's filled in. But there should be some plans that show the topography, and there may even be a stormwater management report. I don't believe it's attached to the, the house per se. I think they did their stormwater management as a subdivision. So I, I don't know if anyone's been able to find that paperwork.
Richard, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
On... Jared, when you were out there, was the property line, do we know exactly where this buffer went to? Was the property line delineated? Do we, were they, did they cut any tree? And we were sure those trees they cut were within that 20-foot buffer?
From, from what I could tell, and I, I questioned the, the applicant, the homeowner on this, there was a survey performed. And there were stakes that, where there was grade stakes or survey stakes that were evident along that line. So I had been informed, because that was one of the first things I asked, is, you know, how did you determine your, your limits of work? And I was told that they did perform a, a survey.
A property line survey?
A, a property line survey. And again, I think, I think the applicant's on board here. I think he's in the meeting, so if he wants to, to chime in, but that is my understanding.
Yeah, so the property line was surveyed, and the tree buffer space was also included in that survey as well.
So all the work you did was outside of that tree buffer?
Correct. The only things that were maybe pulled out were some brush. There were no large trees within that buffer that were pulled down. The only trees that were taken down were well within our property limits.
And, but outside that 20-foot buffer?
Correct.
Okay, uh, so I'm assuming if you wanted to know what it looked like before, I'm sure there, the Board of Health may have an ASBIL. Is the septic system in the front or in the back? Or it's probably in the front?
The septic system's in the front, correct.
Oh, okay, never mind.
But, but you would have, they, they would show, when you had a survey, they would give you a, a plan of that survey?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, no. But with the company that didn't have a, a copy of that?
Yes.
We have a copy as well.
Okay, yeah, okay.
The survey was given to the company?
That did the work.
That did the, that did all the work, yes.
It did, did, the, the landscaping company, right?
Correct.
So there was a engineered plan showing the slopes and what you're going to grade out and how to build it and that sort of thing?
On that plan.
The, the survey that was taken was done by a company, do you know his name? George. His first name was George. It didn't specify the actual topography, like the slopes, and how the, you know, elevation was. That wasn't included in the, in the survey. The survey was just the actual property lines.
It would show that, it would show where the buffer, though, was, right?
It shows a 20-foot buffer, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Right, so when we...
I'm concerned, I'm, I'm just wondering if your backyard basically had a, a swale system built into it to direct the
Both of, all of them.
Sideways to, along the entire back property line of all those houses, like the way your house is.
Really new development. It's 20 years, I think.
Yeah, so both gutters, and I, this is, these are the photos that I sent to Jared, both gutters. One was fully above ground, and it, the, the pipe was probably 80 feet long, and it went from the top of my hill, where my driveway is, all the way down the backyard, out into the middle of the yard, very close to where the, where the end of the new yard is completed. And the, the second gutter on the right side of the house went down into the ground, and it spit out about halfway through the yard, because then the, the hill was, the slope was very, very steep prior. And I showed Jared a few pitches of what it used to look like. So both gutters were, were previously not perforated, and they were just spitting water out into the middle of the yard. Now, with the new plan that we drew up with the, um, the contract and company that did all landscaping, they're all perforated pipes into our yard, so all the storm drainage is leaching out into our yard now. And you just, you, you see the end of the pipes at the back slope now, which is 20 feet from the property line.
Rich, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Jared, what is your, from a, from a civil engineer point of view, what is your assessment of the work that was done out there?
So I, I guess I'll say, I'll speak to the, um, the pipe. Mr. Caldwell was just talking about the perforated pipes. And I did express out there a little bit of concern that, you know, because of the grade that that pipe was sort of set on, coming down from the house and then, you know, pitching, obviously, to daylight out that slope, I, I don't think that water, we know, is going to go path of least resistance, right? So it, it's going to leave the end of that pipe, I think, long before it, it percolates into the ground through that perforated pipe. That's, that, that's my opinion, professional opinion, from what I witnessed out there. So that's why we got to talking a little bit. And again, throw out a disclaimer to say, you know, I really can't, I can't design this project on your behalf. But because this work is done at this point, because we need to protect the interest in, in your butter's property, make sure that there's no impact there, you know, even sooner than later. It was to put this swale, you know, that was thrown out there as a, a best management practice for them to consider. And, and two, if they were going to submit for this permit, that that would be something that the board would be looking for at the very least. So I, I can say that they're clearly, from the pictures that were provided, there was a significant slope there. And, you know, it's tough to say, again, we're, we're reviewing this in hindsight now. Did, did the property owner just simply extend that, extend their yard out and maintain that slope that was already there? I, I can't say, but it, it is a fairly significant slope coming off the leveled area. It was also pre, pre-developed conditions. It was a significant slope up against the house. So it's almost like things got moved just away from the house, so they would gain a backyard. That's, that was sort of my assessment, going out there and, and looking at it. And, and again, it's, usually, we have an opportunity, though, and we have a stormwater report, some calculations to back up, to say we're not changing anything. Yeah, the, the topography's changing a little bit, but because we have this pipe here or this swale here, it's, it's, it's going to function the same way. So that's, that's where, where, where a lack of information here. So... And again, if, if we can, if they can put, or if the board wants to require them to find an existing plan that may show some existing topography, while an analysis can be done at that point, they'd have to do, obviously, a, a topographic survey of the, the work that's been done out there now. And an engineer can, you know, can, can run that analysis and compare peak, you know, pre-developed discharge rates, stormwater rates and volumes to, you know, the post-developed. So that, that is something that can be done. It's, it's just, um, you know, how, what, what does the board want to require, I guess?
Rich, can I, can I say something here?
Yep.
I think the whole point is we don't want any runoff going on to the neighbor's land, right? That's the big issue. What if we had them get an engineer, assess the situation, and develop some kind of plan that will just do that? That will make sure that no water gets in to the neighbor's yard. Whatever they've got to do, if they have to do a retention pond or put in some kind of a trench or whatever, let the engineer design something that he feels will work. They can present that to Jared, and then Jared can work with them on completing the project. Certainly don't want to rip everything out. That doesn't make any sense. But I do think we're, I think where our main objective is making sure that there is no water on any of the abutters, we should get some kind of, of a plan of the existing conditions, and have a plan showing what needs to be done to ensure that there'll be no runoff on the abutters' land. And then let Jared deal with it from there on in. I think, to me, that's the most reasonable solution.
Jared, is that what we had written out already in that, the description that my landscaping company gave you, that we were going to do this?
The problem, the problem, Ron, with that is, you know, he's, he's a landscaping contractor. It's not, in, in that plan wouldn't really rise to the level, I think, of what Mr. LeBlanc is looking for. I mean, in this case, we would want, you know, a professional engineer to have a plan that, and certify that plan, to say, you know, based on just what they see out there right now, let them make the recommendation. We talked about building a swale or you having a swale out there, but let them make that recommendation separate and apart from the town or town officials and, and go on the record to say that this will keep water or mitigate water from impacting your neighbors. So that, that's a little above and beyond what, you know, your landscape contractor, he's just not, not licensed, obviously. So it's a little beyond that, that rendering, that 3D rendering.
Okay.
Now, finding the information from the plans that happened when this development was put here and weighing those up against what we have now, and seeing if there is much of a difference in that runoff or that's, that drainage, is that something we should do? Could we do that first and see if there's a significant difference before doing that? Or should we just go straight to having somebody come and look at it, an engineer come and look at it?
You're gonna, you're gonna need an engineer to do that analysis as well. So I, I suggest, my, my suggestion would be to start there. Start with the engineer.
But that, that is a good idea. I mean, there is information out there. I'm sure the town probably has the original design plan. And if you get a copy of your ASBIL septic, it'll show the house on it, what the grades, you know, you can approximate the grades with that, and I think it'd probably come up with a a decent pre-development scheme, and then you can compare it to what you've done, and, you know, might turn out to be a swale with all you need. So it's, it's just a matter of, like Jared said, getting in touch with the civil engineer, having to draw a plan, and, you know. I think that's, that would be a good plan, in my opinion.
Okay.
Because in essence, they're doing now what probably should have been done when the project started. They'll be, they'll be providing us with an engineered plan. So everything will be above board. If there's any issues that come down to, to Jeff's issue about what happens if the house is sold, well, no, you have a plan showing what you've done, and that also covers you. So... That's my two cents.
Hey, anyone else? How about iPad Pro Steve? Is, do you see the butter in the back that supplied the pictures?
He is.
Care to speak, Steve? You're muted at this time.
Unmute.
There you go.
Okay. Appreciate the response on that. Our, our intent is not to have any of the development removed back there, but just to make sure that we're not going to, we're probably one of the only ones that are dry in our basement. And, and that was our only concern, is just to make sure there's mitigation for that major storm that may come and inundate us with water. So the job that was done is, it's really nicely done. It's completed. the job that was done is, I, it's really nicely done. It's completed. And just basically, it's just for providing insurance that we're not going to have any issues later on down the road. So I appreciate the reception of Ron and the entire board on the matter of even following it up this, to this degree. So thank you.
Okay. When was, when was this work completed?
In January, was it the end of January that that was completed, I believe?
They did in the middle of winter?
Wow.
Yeah, we have relatively now.
I didn't know. I was asking. I didn't know if this thing was done in the fall or whatnot.
Wow.
Yeah, they, they brought the dirt in and then they just did all the lawn stuff.
Nice.
The past week.
That's an impressive company. January.
They just did the whole, they just did the whole. By the, by the Webster Lake, they just did the whole park over.
Yeah, and we would also like to say, you know, in hiring a company, we thought that, that all of the requirements were met in, in moving forward. And.
Yeah, we call it dig save.
Something that we were aware that, you know, there was a storm drainage aspect of, of doing, you know, left pulling out the yard like that. Yeah, we had dig save come. We had everything surveyed, you know, we thought we were following protocol. And so, you know, we apologize to Steve. I understand your concern. I, I probably would do the same thing. So we just want to find a plan that makes everybody happy.
That would be perfect.
You're not alone. A lot of people aren't aware of stormwater management.
That's, that's part of our issue with stormwater management.
Changing a lot of the conditions and stuff. So that'll be.
You get a deed, but you never get a plan of what the lot was supposed to look like.
First time this has happened.
I should, they did anything intentionally.
Just to, yeah, just to make a note, there's, there's probably six houses up our street on this, the left side of the house, driving up the, up founders. And every single house had to do this to their backyard because the way that the builder constructed this, this neighborhood, he left everybody's backyard at, at a, at a complete slope. You can't even, the kids couldn't even go sledding down the hill. It was that big of a slope. So.
But, but what you have to understand is that slope would have been a part of his stormwater management system.
Yeah, so.
Okay. And that's what, that's what we, we're kind of running into.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Changing the flow of water.
Exactly. It's just, it's just, I hope everybody, you know, that had to do this, if there was a plan before, hopefully we can find the, the previous plan.
Because everything looks different now.
Because everything looks different now. Every, every single yard is different. That would, that would be nice, you know, just so we can see it before and after.
You know, Ja- Jared's approach to you was, was going to be hit or miss. You're gonna, gonna monitor it over a timeframe, but who knows when this major storm is going to come?
Yeah.
Okay, we've been in the middle of a drought since last year.
Yeah.
Okay. Water tables have been very low. Okay, everything's been low. Yet we've experienced stuff in the past where people have gotten into a flood situation when things got really wet. Okay. I think from a board's point of view, we want assurance that what you do will stand up to the test of time. And, and I'm sure that's what your neighbor would want you to do too. You gotta stand, try to protect them for the test of time.
And. It sounds like there's a resolution. It sounds like everybody's on the same page. Whether you have previous information or not, once we get a, a, an engineered plan, work it out with Jared, then you'll be good to go. And, and it'll be on record with the time.
I just, my one question was that 24 month period of time.
Yeah.
Is that, so after anything, you know, we get the engineered plan, we do the work, we change it up. And for that 24 months, we just watch it and make sure that it's doing what it should do. And if it doesn't, we have to change it again? Or how does that work?
I think that's up to Jared, right?
Yeah, that was Jared's terminology.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking though, if we've got a, a plan now, if we've got something from an engineer that they're certifying signing off on, that we could, you know, that put our, the town's mind, mind at ease, let's say.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Jared was trying to protect the town. But, you know, you know, eighteen months from now, we have a, we have a four inch rainstorm and something should happen, you know?
Oh, that's right. Tony and I toss that around too. We weren't quite sure. And you know that on 24 months in a day, that's when you get that storm, right? So.
Yeah, it's going to boil up, you know.
Yeah.
From the homeowners, you'll have an engine, you'll have a certified engineer with a storm management pl- plan that will meet your requirements for the town and for yourselves too.
Okay.
You gotta work, tell us out with Jared. He's the one that's going to monitor the thing. So I would, Jared, not to give you more work, but.
No, that's, that's quite right.
Take care of that. He has to sign off. We have to do what's called, Jared, will they have to do an ASBIL or is your sign off?
Well, it's essentially, I, I guess they could. I mean, it's essentially, it's already built, right? Minus any additional measures. So, you know, maybe there, there may be a requirement. We probably want an ASBIL plan as well. So we want to show that, that final condition and have that plan on record. So.
Do you need a motion or anything? Or are we just going to let Jared work it out or?
No, this is, this is a public hearing. I mean.
Should we close the public hearing unless there's more important?
Is there anyone else from the public? There's other names here that I'm not familiar with that want to speak to this particular.
Is there a timeframe that we are, the 24 month, I, I think was before the engineering issue just discussed? Is there a more, is there a more manageable timeframe that we can kind of work with? Or is that 24 months still the, the mile mark that we want to work with?
Well, I think what was said was if you get an engineer involved and they stamp off a plan and it's built according to what the engineer did, you'll, you'll never get any post runoff that was any any worse than the pre.
Exactly. Right. Okay.
So, so it kind of makes the 24 months mute. You know, you, you always run the risk of even an engineered plan could be. We're not going to go there though. That we, we rely on that for all our stormwater management.
Essentially Jared's going to be reviewing an engineered plan that's already been built.
Yep.
It's going to be built.
Except if it needs a swell or whatnot, you'll see that.
Depending on what needs to be done, but he's going to be reviewing a plan that's an engineer. That's, you know, it's probably there.
Well, the, the time of the project is determined by how quick you get an engineer, how quick you can get a plan done, how quick he can review things with Jared and say it's going to work. How soon you can get a contractor in to do the work. And then have an ASBIL done and Jared, you know, review it. So if you have a lot of luck, maybe you'll get it done by the middle or end of the summer. You know, which I would think is something that you, you know, you'd want to get done. But that's, Jared, unless I'm mistaken, yeah, we, the 24 months is out the window, which is.
Yeah, no, that's off the table now.
Yeah, just get the project done as soon as you can. And, you know, takes, takes a little bit of time for the process to go through, but you know, and again, depends on how much work you have to do. You know, if it's just a small swell area you gotta put in, probably not going to be a lot of time. It, it depends on what the engineer comes up with and Jared.
Anyone else?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing, Rich.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Dale. Okay. Have a vote. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Dale?
Yeah.
Christine?
Yes.
Roger? Roger, did you say something? You're muted now. Did you vote? Yes, okay. Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Carrie unanimously. Okay. Norman, you want us shot at making a motion to?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we ask the applicant to hire a registered engineer, certified engineer to go out number one, assess the current conditions. Now whether he does that with a site visit or if he looks up records that are at the town hall, that's okay. Once he does that, he designs a system that will prevent runoff going on to the neighbor's property that they work with Jared and making sure the project gets completed and that Jared has the right to go on there and work with them and monitor the, the project. When it's completed, that they submit an ASBIL saying that the the plan that they initiated has been completed and that Jared signed off on that plan and we will record it with the registry of deeds.
Okay, Norman, can we add in there that we expect the applicant to follow the DPW memo dated April 26, 2021?
Yes.
For construction and any restoration of the tree buffer?
Yes, I can add, we can add that, sure.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Jeff. Further discussion?
Can, can I just ask a question? Are you approving the stormwater based on the submission by engineering?
Well, we're not approving anything because we don't have a plan yet, right? We're waiting for one.
Okay.
Right? So it is.
Well, we're not, no, if we were going to wait, we wouldn't have your motion, Norman. We'd just continue the public hearing until they get it.
Okay.
I thought where you were going was that we would approve it based upon having an engineered plan and working with the DPW.
That's what I meant to say. Yes. Thank you, Rich.
So kind of, yeah, Mary, we are approving the stormwater management based upon some futuristic engineering plan.
Okay.
Rich, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When do we approve? When do we approve projects before we look at the engineering plan?
Almost never.
Yeah.
But this is an extenuating circumstance. We've never had a situation like this.
Well, we're also conditioned on, on Jared reviewing the plan too.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, because tha- that's where fuzziness comes in. We're not really approving a plan.
No.
We're, we're, we're setting up a.
Trying to rectify.
Yeah, we're trying to rectify something that's already done. I, you know, I think we're giving Jared the leeway to basically approve the plan. I think that's the intent here.
Yeah.
Right? What, what, we're technically, we're not approving a plan, in my opinion.
There isn't a plan to approve, really.
But we're, we're approving a some conditions that would address the problem and that, and that we're giving Jared the authority to give his blessing to whatever's done.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is it, are you, are they, is an approval of the issuance of the land disturbance, the permit? A condition approval, I guess? You know, contingent that where we received this plan, you know, prior to commencement of work, something to that effect? Is that, Mary? I think that's maybe what you're asking.
That makes sense. A conditioned approval?
Of, of the, yeah, issuance of the permit and, and, you know, that we get that plan though for review prior to.
Okay, so Norman's motion would be in a conditional approval.
Yeah. Well, that's why I put those other things in after, all these things that Jared has to work with it.
Yeah.
They have to have a certified plan by.
Kind of like a minor site plan. We're approving a minor site plan without any work being done yet. But we do, you know.
I mean, I did put a, I did put a number of conditions. So, but to, to answer Craig's question specifically, we don't do that, but that's not what we're doing.
There's no plan.
Rich, can I ask another question?
Yep.
What, what is the rush? Why can't we wait for the plan to be in front of us and then make a decision? Do we only have like two weeks to approve this or what is the rush? I mean, it's already built. I mean, we're not holding any abutters up. We're not holding up the proponent. So why don't we just wait for the plan and see what's coming?
What if there's a, what if we have a major event and there's runoff and it goes on to the neighbor's land in the meantime?
Well, that's going to happen anyway, Norman, until I got a plan. Right. I hear where Craig is coming from too. I'm going to need how much time we got, Mary.
So the action date is May 26. So if you keep the hearing open, it allows the.
We've already closed it.
We can reopen it. We can make a motion to reopen. Let's get this right. You know, this is different. Yeah, this is different. I mean, right now we're throwing all, all of the project back to Jared with the hope that these, the, the applicant is going to pursue engineering. Okay.
So if you keep it open.
There's a little bit of danger involved in there, I think.
I have no problem, Rich, redoing my retracting my request to close the public hearing. And I have no problem retracting my motion as far as approving this with the conditions, although I think.
Okay, well, we haven't gone, we haven't made a vote on that. Mary, should we vote to?
We open it?
Rescind the previous motion?
Yes.
Okay. Rich, I make a motion to rescind my previous motion.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. Okay, let's go through the, the motion, the approval again. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
What are we voting on here now? What are we?
Rescinding the public hearing.
Going to reopen the public hearing.
I vote yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Okay, unanimously, we reopen the public hearing. Basically, I think we should reschedule this agenda item for what's our meetings in May? I'm not sure that they're going to be ready for that first one or not.
May 10th and May 24th.
Rich, can I say something? Hopefully the applicant understands what we're doing here. In other words, before May 24th, if that's the date we pick, you have to have your, your plan done so we can review it. And I, I don't know if you folks have an engineer or how long it's going to take it to do that.
So we do not have an engineer at the moment. We do understand what is being said.
Okay.
We do need to move forward with trying to find that and it fitting into their schedule to get out here and then time to create the plan. So.
Okay, what you can do in the meantime, what you can do in the meantime is request an, an extension to act for the planning board. Okay, you can do that based upon the fact that you have problems getting an engineer to react that fast.
Right.
Okay, but what we have to do is we have to continue the public hearing. And in my opinion, the first meeting in May is too soon. Okay, so I was thinking scheduling it for May 24th.
But.
But, but we would really like, we would really like you to let us know when it's going to be by you sending correspondence to, to the, to our office and say you'd request an extension type thing.
Yeah, I was just going to say, they can do that anytime though, right? Rich, they don't have to wait till the 24th to file that extension.
Yeah, they don't have to wait till the 24th. What they can do it at our next meeting on the 10th. I don't care.
Do that.
Get something in writing and they get presented to us and we'll, we'll extend the time of action. We don't want, we don't want to.
Rich, they gotta do it before the 31st, otherwise.
Well, we, we gotta do it. We don't want it to be constructively approved. Well, we got nothing to constructively approve yet either, so.
This is a new one.
All right, so. Entertained a motion to continue this public hearing to 7:05 on May 24th, 2021?
What's the date on that?
Looking rich.
May 24th.
It's 7:05.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make that.
I made it. Jeff made the motion. Seconded him. Seconded by Craig. Okay. Okay. Further discussion? There being none. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Dale?
Yeah.
Christine?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Greg?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rich, can I just say one thing to the applicant? So if you're not going to have it by the 24th?
Yeah. I can email Mary.
We need to send a request to us to extend the time that we have to act. Because we need time to react to it. So if you're not going to be done by the 24th, just write a memo that you.
Yeah, if they can't come till June, no sense of us having, holding another meeting. But with a, while we, during one of our meetings, we can react to your request for extension.
Yeah.
Okay.
And reschedule a public hearing to.
I have Mary's email and I have Jared's email. I can email them both and CCM together and let them know.
Make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You.
7:10, we had a continued public hearing, Stafford Street, map 01, parcel AO 3.01, application for special permit, site plan approval, stormwater management permit, land disturbance permit, applicant known a Hydro Cutter Incorporated for the construction of a self-storage facility with associated parking, site work drainage and stormwater management. And, uh, looks like we got a a stormwater management date of, uh, action coming up. We'll have to deal with if we can't get through this tonight, so. Mr. Holken, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Um, so we had a meeting on April 12th. At that point, we hadn't have, we hadn't had, uh, new comments from the DPW or from Graves yet. So we have both of those responses now. Uh, DPW came in today. Essentially, all the technical stuff has been addressed, they want some coordination when we do the work in the road, uh, the tree cutting. Uh, Graves Engineering is essentially addressed, they had two outstanding comments. One of them, comment number three, uh, I'll give you the, the summary of it, says that if tree clearing consists of more than just select cutting the sightlines, then the G E R recommends new trees be planted to address site aesthetics and buffering of the storage buildings. So just to clarify that, Tom has indicated that he has no intention of cutting any more than he has to to create effective sightline, so he doesn't wanna cut the whole, the whole site, you just, you know, nobody needs to and stop at that point. The other comment that's outstanding is comment number 11. Sort of a technical comment. I sent Jeff some updated information last week, I copied Mary and Tony on it. Jeff, go back to me today, basically said that the stuff that I sent him last week was, uh, gonna address that comment, but I didn't wanna do was update the whole plan set and the report for one comment in case there was other stuff that needed to be captured in a new revision, so I just sort of addressed that one comment at the time. So aside from that, I think Jeff is all set, agrees engineering. Um, the other discussion item was to talk about the basin and fencing, you guys had asked that I reach out to Judy and Jared. Heard back from Judy, she's, she basically said she'll defer to Jared. Jared indicated that is no exception with the two to one slopes. Um, I'll sort of read the, the memo here, uh, in our opinion, protection should be provided at the top of the basin that fits the rural aesthetic of the street. Fencing and security measures may include timber guard rail, split rail timber fencing and/or landscape plantings. So I think that sort of summarizes all the outstanding issues that we talked about last week. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have. But before I get into that question to answer stuff, I just sort of wanna remind you guys that Tom's trying to do his site as effectively as possible. And he's gotten prices back for the fencing, fencing's gonna be expensive, so he would really, really prefer not to do any more fencing that's absolutely necessary, and then also keeping in mind that I think that the intent of the fencing here is to keep or limit access into the basin. Um, and just keep in mind that there's a depression literally immediately downstream about eight feet lower than our basin is proposed, that contains water, standing water for periods of time during the year that doesn't have a fence around it, so just wanna try to balance common sense with what we really need to do, but of course, always we defer to what you guys wanna do.
Well, at the end of the day, what does Jared want?
Is he still on the call?
Jared, you still here?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, I'm here. Well, I, I think that I, I understand Carl, what you're saying too, that, that immediately downs- downstream of this, but I mean, we, we've gotta look at it through the lens of, you know, your project limits and what you're proposing, right? So I think making an exception for the two to one slopes, I, I think we're, you know, willing to work with you on that. But now we've created a, a steeper slope and I, I think just given proximity to the town's right of way. Um, I, I think that we'll, we'll look to have some sort of fencing, some sort of security measures, you know, for that, for that area, you know, and I I guess i- in, in my mind, yes, any sort of fencing will do the trick, right? Secure chain link fencing will do the trick, but you know, there's other goals, I think that, and, and again, I'll just, that was my opinion and I'll defer to the board on what the aesthetic, you know, aesthetic appeals that, of that should be. But I, I, I think at the very least, we, you should, you should account for some sort of security fencing around that.
So if we were to do like a, a timber guard rail or split rail fence or something like that, it's, it's the security measure doesn't really apply to those items, just cuz a kid could literally go under the fence or something like that, would the board consider like a row of, like boulders or something like that, if there's, if we're looking for a guard rail or something that just sort of creates a barrier so that it looks like you're not supposed to go in this thing? Can we do that instead? Tom can get rocks for free, basically, and still create some sort of a barrier, whether it be you know, all the way around or partway around, however, we can do it, you know? Like I said, he's trying to do it as, as cost-effectively as possible.
And I understand that obviously a split rail fence is not gonna have, if somebody wants to get in it, but I guess the same could be say for any height, say if it's a four foot, six foot height chain link fence, if somebody wants to get in there, they will, so they're not gonna put barbed wire on the top of it, obviously. But a- again, I think there is something to be said for the, the aesthetics of the, of the area, I know this is gonna be essentially a you know, commercial development when it's all said and done, but there's still a, a rural character. Um, you know, with respect to Stafford Street, so.
And, I mean, Graves Engineering recommends a fence too, on, on number 13 in their comments, they're recommending a four-foot chain link fence around it. And that's what it says, they, they recommend a, a four-foot chain link fence around the basin.
And I should, I should note too, if I just may interject again, we, there is precedent for a, a split rail fence, we've seen that thing, we've seen that sort of thing, excuse me, on other projects, uh, around basins, you know, and I can, uh, I, I can think of a couple, uh, at least one on Main Street where that was the case at least, um. So th- there's precedent there for that sort of thing.
Now, I'm I've done a lot of thinking about this, you know? Like we said at the last meeting that, you know, D E P, whatever guidelines are, three to one. So for safety, okay, you went to two to one, okay? More unsafe for somebody that's gonna fall into this thing, okay, now I look at the other two sides of this thing. They have to go up the two to one to get down to, get to the top and then go down two to one, but on this side towards the road. Once you, once you trip or fall or anything, you're going right down into that basin at two to one. And I, and I agree with Jared, I, if I was gonna, if I was gonna say so, it, it would have to protect that particular position, you got nothing that's gonna stop anyone from going into that basin. If, if they accidentally fall or whatever. So.
So is it a matter that we just do the side facing Stafford Street, would that be okay?
For me, yes. Cuz at least the other, the other, the other two sides, they have to climb up. They have to climb up a steep slope to get to the slope, slope to go back in. You know, I don't think they're good, I'm just worried about the inadvertent trip, fall, whatever. And once they, once, one misstep, they're going all the way down into the, uh, into that, uh, depression.
I'm okay with just Stafford Street, that's what my feeling was.
That's what you, you wore, Norman, I agree, I, and I looked at, I thought long and hard about it.
Yeah.
Okay, and I, I saw what was happening to the other two sides. Uh, you got chain leaks, link fence on the back of this property, which if someone comes tumbling down to that thing, that's gonna stop them from going into your property. Well and good. But this is no different from us, from, from the street point of view. Oh, I'm okay with split rail, anything that will show people that, you know, one step beyond here, you're going down you know, 10 feet, whatever. Very steeply.
And split rail fence on the Stafford Street side.
Yep.
I agree with that.
Can I ask Tom if he wants to comment?
I, I understand the safety along the street. Um, I think the fence is gonna be into my property. Uh, I don't have a plan in front of me, but it's gonna be probably about 20 feet in from the road. Um, I think before we get to the basin, correct me if I'm wrong, Carl. Um, I have no problem putting rocks in between the trees and along the road to keep any vehicles out, people out. Um, lord knows, I got plenty of them in that property. The chain link fence, uh, I'd like to stay away from if, if possible, wooden one might be probably a little more aesthetically pleasing anyway to the neighbors. And a little more cost-effective. You know, I've got some of that fencing here along my wall, it's basically two vertical pieces and two hurls on along every, every eight, 10 feet. So, um, I'd prefer to do the wooden one, I think it'd be more aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors.
Okay, what do you wanna do, Kyle, you wanted, you didn't put that on a plan or anything yet, so.
Is that something we can condition? It's, it's, it's really just literally a line on paper, I can do it tomorrow, I just wanna get Tom on us.
How about the specifications of the fence, I mean, there's all kinds of split rail fence, right? We want something that's gonna be glass, not some, something that's made out of pine and in 10 years, it's all rotted and.
Right. So a hardwood?
And Rich, I'm wondering how the rest of the board feels, you and I seem to be on board with.
I know, yeah, see.
Split rail fence.
I, I'm going, I'm going with what Graves Engineering recommends, so that's, that's, that's my opinion. They, they recommend a fourth, that's what they recommend, that, that's what we pay, that's what we paying the money for, that, that's what they get paid for, the, the recommendation is a four-foot chain link fence.
We also pay Jared to do that.
I know, and I.
Well, the way I looked at it, it doesn't, it doesn't hold water all the time.
I know.
It, uh, you know, isn't that deep, when you come right down to it, it isn't that deep.
And I, and I understand that, you know, the you know, putting a whole fence around the whole prop, the, the, the storageers to protect them. And again, when it comes to the stormwater basin, I mean, they're willing to do something, again. You know, I, I'm just going with what the, the engineer that we had to review the plan recommend, that's all.
May I ask a, a simple question?
Yeah.
What if, what if I propose this, we put the basin in and then have y'all do a quick site visit to see if it's necessary to put a fence? Cuz we're all just looking at a piece of paper.
Yeah.
Right now, and when it comes to reality, you may say, oh geez, this is far enough away, or maybe, yes, we prefer a, a fence across that. Do like a, a conditional.
Rich, can I say something? You know, we're trying to work with you. The fact that we're okay with the two to one slope instead of a three to one slope, I think is a major benefit to you. We're not looking, again, apparently, we're not looking for a chain link fence other than Jeff. And maybe some of the others feel the, no, I, I, I'm not being funny, Jeff, I think some other people might feel the same way with you. Okay, but we'll, it looks like two of us anyway are willing to go along with the split rail fence. And you can do your two to one slope, and we only require it on the, on Stafford Street side, I, I think I think the board is being more than fair and trying to work with you on this project. Uh, and I would, uh, again, based on feedback from Jared, that's the way I'm leaning to go right now. Split rail fence on the Stafford Street side of the retention.
Rich, I'm fine with the, uh, split rail fence also.
Roger?
With Jared.
You're, you're okay with, Dale, you're okay with Jared, Roger, what do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, uh, you know, Jared's good with it.
Okay, we got more than enough to, to condition that, uh, plan to put a split rail fence along Stafford Street. All right. Okay, well, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Anyone from the public first?
Yeah, is anyone from the public here on that? There, there's, this is just one name I don't, I don't recognize, there's a whole number there too, I don't recognize. I don't know why they, Chris Colross?
Oh, that's, uh, for 80 Lester Street.
Okay. And the other phone number, I don't know who that is, and I know this TC Control is permanent too, so. Those are the only ones we got. So.
I'll make that a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Roger. I vote yes, Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
I vote yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine? You're abstaining, Christine? Well, she's frozen, but yeah, she's abstaining because she.
No, I said yes.
I think, I think you missed too, you can't vote on this one, Christine, so.
Oh.
So we just, we'll just, uh, say abstain.
Am I back?
You're back, you're a little.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. So Christine abstains, okay, so.
Abstain, abstain.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I'm sorry, must be my internet.
You're right, okay, no problem. Who wants to make a motion? Norman?
Um, I, I make a motion that we approve the plan of this project, what's the date of the plan, I don't have it.
And the revised plan that we're working with, what is that date?
Carl, do you have that date?
I do. Um, it's April 1st.
April 4th.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the plan submitted to the board on April 1st, 2021. Uh, provided they meet all the conditions, uh, except the fence regarding what we got from Graves Engineering. And as far as regarding the fence, that they put up a split rail fence, pressure treated or a hardwood fence uh, along the Stafford Street side of the retention pond.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion?
Can I?
Okay.
Clarify that you're approving special permit, site plan review, stormwater management.
Yeah.
This is for everything, this is for the stormwater management and the site plan approval and land disturbance approval.
Okay, just wanted that clarified.
Okay, yeah, all three, Mary. Okay, any other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's a special permit in there as well.
Right, special permit, site plan.
And stormwater management.
Okay, special permit too, yeah, okay.
Site plan and stormwater management.
Yep, all, all four of them.
That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second, Roger seconded, right, did you second?
Yeah, I did.
You did, okay, okay, further discussion? There being none, I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote no.
Norman?
Vote yes.
Uh, Roger?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Abstain.
Yep. Okay, so it carries five, but for the affirmative, one no, and one abstention.
Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 12th, 2021.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
Dale seconded it. Any discussion? We went okay. All right. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
I vote yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Were you here?
You weren't here.
You weren't here. You got abstained. Last meeting.
Oh, abstain.
Yep, and Christine? Abstain.
Abstain.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna deviate a little bit here. Instead of talking, uh, about the, uh, warrant articles, we'll go to, uh, old business, uh, eighty Lester Street submission of a partial site plan as built. Plan request for temporary certi- certificate of occupancy of compliance and temporary certificate of occupancy. And then we have a somewhere in my pile, messy pile of papers. They have a Jared reviewed, uh, was it you Jared that reviewed it? No? I can't find it now. Someone reviewed it. Tell us what, what needed to be done.
Summit Engineering.
Maybe Summit did.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say.
Summit Engineering.
Summit Engineering and, and then Tony provided comments.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I just summarized, um,
Okay, Tony, go ahead.
Um, so for, for this site, the applicant requesting a temporary oxy permit. Um, the site is substantially completed with the following outstanding items. Final pavement to be completed in the binder locations. Loom seed and growth established prior to removing erosion controls. Trees to be planted. Parking striping is to be completed. ADA signage is to be installed and debris on the property is to be removed. The owner agrees to have the items completed within sixty days, at which time final as-built and certification will be requested from the board. In conversation with the building commissioner, the building commissioner recommends granting the sixty day temporary occupancy permit, should the board wish to grant it. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So they, they have some, you know, landscaping issues basically. And, uh, finish the packing. Anyway, what's the board's wish on that? Give them sixty days?
Rick, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, what happens after sixty days if none of this stuff is done?
It's a season to assist.
So. Okay. All right.
Or they come back and, and let us know that they have not finished and could they get another extension on the temporary?
Yeah, one or the other. They seem confident they could do it. I, from what I read, um, they seem, they seem like they could do it, so. So I'll entertain a motion to notify the, uh, building inspector of a sixty day, uh, temporary certificate of compliance and temporary certificate of occupancy.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Jeff, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dale. Further discussion? There being none, I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Greg?
Am I allowed to vote on this one? This wasn't a, I could vote on this, right?
Oh, this is, this is old business, yeah.
This is old business. It's been done.
I vote yes.
Okay, Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Heard you namelessly. Okay. Uh, let's go on to, uh, submissions. We got a submission on fifty-six Howard Street Lot Eight. Application for stormwater management and land disturbance permit applicant DJ Enterprises Incorporated. Owner Gary L. and Susan Lee Killian, construction of a single family dwelling with associated site work and drainage.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, it appears that a date for public hearing needs to be set. Um, as I understand, DPW has reviewed the plans and they, they will handle the review process.
Entertain a motion to accept the submission.
Make that motion.
We still have to hold a public hearing, right, Mary? Cause it is stormwater management.
Yep. So where Jared is going to be doing an internal review, I would, um, defer to Jared. Uh, the first meeting in May, Jared is May tenth. Bless my calendar. May tenth is the first meeting, which basically gives you, um, a week and a half to look at it. Town meetings coming up.
Yeah, no, I, I would say just it'd probably be better suited to probably the end of the month. Is that the next meeting?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, yeah. I think that's more realistic for us.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so entertain a motion to approve this submission and schedule a public hearing for seven ten on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-six. Oh, twenty-fourth, sorry. It is the twenty-fourth.
Yes, it is.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, Jeff made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? There being none, call for the roll call vote. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dale?
Yeah.
Christine?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we gotta go back to the town warrant. We've got a Mary came up with a list of articles to, uh, what the heck is this? Okay. First, first article that Mary got a recommendation to get a, uh, recommendation on the planning board is Article thirteen to see if the town will vote to transfer from an unexpended balance of a appropriation made and a vote taken under Article ten on the May first, two thousand nineteen annual town meeting for streetlights. A sum of fifty thousand dollars to be used for the purchase and installation of paving the Cabunko Beach Packing Lot under the direction of the Department of Public Works, including any incidental relating expenses direct thereon, sponsored by the town manager. So. What says you, boy?
I mean, the money, the money's gonna be used for something, right? It's, it's this money coming from, it was supposed to be used for streetlights and now they wanna use it for the paving. Is that?
I guess that's where, I guess that's where that money is residing at the moment, yes.
Okay.
Wanna make a rec-
Are you looking for? I recommend we vote to approve this or?
Yeah, I think, yeah, Article thirteen.
To recommend, to recommend Article thirteen?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Greg made the motion, Jeff seconded. I'll vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Greg?
Yeah.
Dale?
Yeah.
Christine?
Yes.
Heard you namelessly. Next article was Article eighteen. To see if the town will amend, will vote to amend the Oxford General Bylaw, Chapter forty-three by replacing the title boating with the title pond use. And by amending section one by inserting the following sentence at the end thereof, no person shall operate a motorboat vehicle or other equipment on Cabunko Pond without, with a gasoline or diesel engine. Act or act thereon sponsored by the Conservation Commission.
I, I, I definitely think that we should approve that one.
Okay, so Jeff makes the recommendation to approve Article eighteen. Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Roger. Okay, further discussion? Roll call, I vote yes. Right, uh, Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Greg?
Yeah.
Christine? Yes, she said, I think I read lips.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And Dale?
Yeah, I don't know. It must be my internet. I don't know.
Dale?
Yes.
Okay, heard you namelessly. Don't worry, Christine, we all have our problems.
Yeah.
He's like a ventriloquist. I'm just lost in paperwork myself.
I know, I know.
Okay, now we get to our articles, Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford General Bylaw by deleting chapters sixty-six and sixty-seven in their entirety and inserting a new chapter, sixty-six as follows. Okay, and it's, I'm team pages long.
Yeah, can it, can it be any longer?
Well, we, we did, um, it's obviously it's consolidated, right?
Yeah, get rid of two.
Now in one.
Yeah, get rid of two.
I, I do think the page count is, it's less. It's less than what the combined was, so.
No, it's good.
It's some progress.
Oh, it's good. I'm, I'm teasing.
And if, and if the board would like, I can just point out, you know, a few things that I've identified. I understand, obviously, you've got it in front of you. This, this is the final version of the draft that we intend to bring before town meeting. Um, so a, a couple of, I think, major points worth mentioning and I'll, I'll entertain all questions that you may have about the revised bylaw. First and foremost, we did, we were aiming to consolidate into one chapter. We also pulled out a lot of the technical and, and plan criteria, a lot of the, um, the standards that were set forth. Um, the idea with this bylaw is to try to keep it as concise and streamlined as possible. Pull that technical, those technical requirements out and promulgate a, a set of rules and regulations under this bylaw that'll contain a lot of that information, a lot of the procedural stuff that administration will deal with essentially. And that would be a rules and regulations that can be, um, I guess more easily amended or revised if need be, so we don't have to go back to town meeting. It could simply be, um, you know, a, a, a new draft or amendment to those rules and regs that could be approved by the Board of Selectmen. And it can obviously brought before the, the planning board in advance of that, you know, in, in consultation with them, so. Um, that, that's sort of the general idea is to really just keep this, uh, to the nuts and bolts of the bylaw and, um, and pull that stuff out of here. Um, there's also been a change to the, uh, phrase land disturbing activity. There's difference from the original bylaw. There's now a reference to tree and brush clearing. Um, the board may recall this been, and I can remember, um, you know, going back a few years, some projects where we've had some considerable tree clearing. Um, and it's, it's not been defined in that current bylaws to whether that, you know, qualifies as a land disturbing event. We've said in the past, I believe that if, you know, the lot's not stumped or grubbed, that there's been no change to the, the curve number, right, of that surface. Um, so it, it, it doesn't qualify. So that's been changed in here. Um, and I think one of the, now the biggest change, and we've talked about this, um, you know, several weeks ago, when we said we were undertaking this, this revision was the applicability criteria. So under section four, if you've had a, a chance to review that, um, you'll, you'll see that we tried to be much more specific in what projects that we were requiring. Um, now, what did change slightly since we, we talked about initially is that we, we talked about the area thresholds, the area thresholds with land disturbing activity that we're currently, we're looking at projects that are under ten thousand square feet. We've got our applicability flow chart, right, that we look at to sort of vet projects. Well, we, we thought that we would move beyond ten thousand square feet and only look at ten thousand square feet and above, but I think it's, it's fitting that we're talking about this tonight when we also had a project like Founder's Court, um, you know, come before you, because that's a project that is, is less than ten thousand square feet, but we can see that there is likely some impacts to abutters or some, a butter concern, right? For that project. So what we're proposing is that we will still look at projects from a thousand to ten thousand square feet, um, only if there's a steep slope concern, because I think that what we sort of reviewed amongst ourselves is that, that, those are really the projects that we're concerned about. Um, at, at a lesser area, it, it's just the ones on a steep slope. And what we've done with this proposed bylaw is we've added sort of a two-stage or two-layered review process depending on the, um, the scale of the work and the scope of the work. So those projects under ten thousand square feet would only be subject to an administrative land disturbance approval process. Now that process is still gonna be, is still being fleshed out. That's gonna be in the rules and regulations. But what we anticipate is it being a much more abbreviated review process that doesn't require a public hearing, that it's really just born on administration. So that we would have people come before, uh, or come to the land management office in consultation with DPW and say, you know, in narrative form, maybe with a sketch, say, this is what I'm doing. Um, a, a, and then we would review it accordingly. Um, the bylaw does provide an avenue that if, if a project does come over to us in that form and we decide or we see that it's much more involved, um, we can always kick it into a full land disturbance permit review process that would then require the engineered plans that would require the public hearing process. So that's, that's another big, um, addition to this, this proposed bylaw. Uh, but generally speaking, for a project to be kicked into the, um, full permit process, uh, land disturbance process, it, it would be between that. Um, and I just wanna pull that up here, so I'm don't, uh, get my facts wrong here. Let me see here. I've got the packet in front of me. One moment. I wanna say that the ten thousand to one acre threshold, it's still, um, it's a land disturbance administrative approval process, again, that it'd be a much abbreviated process than what we envisioned or what we have now. But again, if we find that a project and this will be spelled out in the rules and regulations, um, it'll get kicked to a, a full permit review. But generally, the, the forty thousand or say the acre threshold is that threshold now to kick something in automatically to a full permit process like we kind of envision now or we have now, sorry. So that, that's really the biggest change and that's really one of the things that we really wanted to accomplish with this bylaws be um, more specific, um, with, with the projects that we're trying to capture, I should say, and, and kind of expand that threshold. Um, another point, I just got a couple more here and I'd be happy to answer questions. Um, in section six, we've given now, um, in this bylaw, CONCOM authority, permit granting authority for projects that are jurisdictional, um, to, to CONCOM. So if a project requires a notice of intent, right now, it, it's sort of gray, right? I think that a lot of the process still goes through planning board in, in the Conservation Commission and the agent impose conditions as part of the notice of intent. Well, this would just say that anything under their jurisdiction, they become the permit granting authority. So again, where, where the whole idea is to sort of streamline this process for us and for uh, potential project applicants proponents. So that would be a, a change as well. We also, and this was part of what prompted the change, um, was to remain in compliance with our stormwater MS four permit. Um, we, we put in a caveat about must, they must demonstrate that LID or low impact development, um, measures have been used to the max extent feasible, so we added that language in there. Um, there's also a set of requirements, including, um, one that the board may impose, um, that record, includes recording the O and M plan with the Registry of Deeds. So I know that that was, um, something that we had talked about that I think the board and, and most of us wanted to see in there. Uh, and then the, the other point worth mentioning is that this would, this bylaw if approved at town meeting, it would sunset the current regulations August first. So that would give everything, that would give the, um, AG's office a, a, a chance to review all this after town meeting, should it be approved, and then we'd move on with, with the new byline. And in, before that time, we would have a, you know, a draft set of rules and regulations or, or actually- or, or actually say an approved set by the time that this by law is effective. And that's, again, something that we would bring before the board and, and certainly the Board of Selectmen too, to get approval on.
Hey, thank you, Jared.
Yep.
Rich, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Norm.
Well, thank you for doing this, Jared. This is something we've been talking about for years, and I, I think the, uh, the benchmark of a ten percent or greater is reasonable. I, I just wanna understand a little bit about the process. So if it's under an acre of land, the only way we're gonna trigger a full-scale, uh, plan is if it has a ten percent slope. Is that correct?
That's not, that is for under ten thousand. So what we're looking at from ten, uh, ten thousand to an acre i- is we're looking at that definition of land disturbing, land disturbing activity essentially. And again, this is, but from ten thousand to an acre, it's this administrative land disturbance approval process. And, and again, I, I, that is something that's still in the works, um, you know, Mr. LeBlanc, as to what that process looks like. But in our initial talks, it's, it's something that we envisioned being much more abbreviated than what is going on now, and it might, it may not entail an engineered plan or an engineered, you know, full stormwater point, because some of these projects, it just may not rise to that level. So that's something that we need to talk with, with our consultants, talk through internally as to what our process looks like. And, and other towns are doing this currently. They've got sort of a two-staged process. So, so that's kind of what we're seeking to do here.
The, the issues we have, or I see we have, we don't have any problem with full scale when you're doing a commercial job. Again, if it's under an acre, and we can help somebody, small business people out, I'm, I'm all for making the, uh, the process easier. It sounds like you're looking to do. The issues we come into all the time, this person has an annual lot, and he wants to build a house. And typically, was it like this, maybe twenty thousand square feet? Would that be a good guess as to what's typically disturbed when you build a single-family home?
I didn't get that. You broke up.
What, what I'm saying is, when you, when you, most of these single-family homes that I've seen, they disturb, they disturb less than twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah, it's, it's probably, say, a half an acre or so typically.
So what you're saying is they don't have to come before us. They're gonna go to you, they're gonna give you some kind of an informal plan, you're gonna look at it, and you're gonna say you need to do this, this, and this, right?
That's, that's what we're envisioning this, uh, administrative approval process to be.
So we're out of the process unless you feel it needs a, uh, a really full design system.
That's right. So if we have, if you have a project, let's say that's in half an acre in, in disturbance area, and, um, you know, we're gonna look at things, though, like slope. We're gonna look at proximity to wetlands still. And that may be the trigger, um, where we say, well, listen, this project does, you have to do some amount of engineering, you, you have to elevate this to a full permit review. That's when it would be, come before the board essentially.
I'm okay with the ten percent slope, but again, if it's near wetlands, that goes to the Conservation Commission anyway, right?
That's right. That's what this is proposing now. So that would be if it's within, under their jurisdiction, now they become permit granting authority, and it, and it goes through them, so.
I guess what I'm trying to do is get a lot of this off of our back and on to you. And, and inevitably, what happens is, we constantly say, all right, we gotta, we gotta hear from the DPW for some, uh, directly, and then it drags on and on and on. Which brings me to another que- uh, question. When it comes to reviewing, let's, again, talk residential. I, I think, and Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, once in a while, do we, do we go once in a while to Graves, Mary, or is it solely?
We do once in a while, yes.
I would be looking for consistency in that, uh, because it's my understanding that when they go to Graves, the applicant has to pay for it. If the town reviews it, there's no cost. Is that correct? For them to have it reviewed?
Correct.
Right, so we're kind of playing favorites here to some people, right? So I think we need to deal with that, Jared. Either we charge everybody a fee, or we don't charge anybody a fee, or if you can review, you know, a certain, and again, I'm talking residential, uh, on your own, I think that would be good. But that's something that somebody had mentioned to me before about, well, some people have to pay and some people don't. So just be aware of that when you start dealing with these administrative.
I think, I think since I've been back, and, you know, Mary and I have talked about this, I think we've tried, when on the smaller scale, residential typically being smaller scale, is that we said that we'll try to bring those back in-house as consistently as we can. So that's certainly what I'm striving for, um, is that we do those internally once more, so, um, that, that's, yeah.
Well, I understand it, and I think it's definitely a step in the right direction, and, uh, hopefully we won't see it too much on this. Thanks, Jared.
You're welcome.
Rich, can I ask a question?
Hey.
Jared, um, so I was listening to you, and it seems like I hear a lot about you're, you're saying like, this is what we envision, things like that, that make me kind of think that maybe we're not ready to go to the town meeting yet? Like, maybe we don't have the process specifically laid out? Are we, should we, should we fine tune it? Should we hold off on the town meeting right now?
Well, I think this is our opportunity, so we tried to, um, what we tried to do is we have requirements that we needed to build into this for, um, optimizing nitrogen removal. That is one, one aspect that our MS four requirement, uh, MS four permit required. These are things that needed to be done a- a- and include the language about LID measures. These are things that need to be done by June thirtieth, the end of the fiscal year. So we've incorporated into that. We've also taken it as an opportunity, though, to, to revamp this as well. So we, we kind of, we're committed now to bring this before town meeting. I, I guess when I say envision, you're right, there, there is a component of this in the rules and regulations that really it's just ironing out a lot of the procedural things, but the foundation for the by law, I mean, that's all been thoroughly vetted in here. And that's been between myself, conservation, working with Mary and Tony out of the Land Management Office, and, and along with Ty and Bond, our consultant, who's drafted these up for, for many towns, you know, across the Commonwealth. So this is not, this language has been utilized before in other towns. We've obviously put our spin on it, according to what we're trying to accomplish, especially with the applicability threshold. So I mean, I'm, I'm confident with how this stands, bringing it before town meeting, um, just knowing that there is those rules and regulations. And that, I think what's, what's good about that is that we can change the rules and regulations more readily if we need to. You know, that this is gonna be, this is something now, where this by law has been in place now for how many years? Since the early two thousands? And, you know, probably for a long time, we've known that it's not necessarily working, um, the best that it could, um, but it, it takes quite an effort, you know, to get this ready and to bring it before town meeting. Now, i- it'd be a much easier process, should we need to refine it. You know, I, I think as part of the policy development process, you know, we're, we're, you need to make changes. You need to take a look after it's been in, in effect and take a step back and do some performance measurement. So I think with a by law such as this, and having the rules and reg- regulations promulgated under that, um, it allows us to do that, allows us to take a step back, and if we need to make some changes. But the, the foundation, I think, is here, um, you know, in the language that we're, we're presenting at town meeting, so.
But we don't have any choice.
There's, no, there's certainly a choice. There, there absolutely is. Um, I, is there something in particular, I guess, I, I mean, that is concerning to you, or?
I, I, it seemed, like I said, I'm just, like, I, I'm not speaking for Norman, but I'm, I also envisioned walking into the town hall, I'm gonna build a house. My lot is a little bit, I have a little wetlands within, maybe, maybe I'm within the buffer zone. So I immediately take that to the Conservation Commission, and they approve it, right? Planning Board never sees it. Right? Is that the way it works?
That would be, under this by law, yes. I mean, if you're going, if you're submitting a plan to conservation, because you're within the buffer zone, and depending on the scale of your project.
Yeah.
Subject to the same area thresholds, everything in here, but you're gonna go through just CONCOM now.
So now I come in without, without, uh, any wetland bylaws at all. Um, I have my single-family house, I'm disturbing twenty thousand square feet. I bring you, then you look at it, and you decide what happens next.
Myself, it'll be land management. It's, it's not, it'll, it'll be a collective review, administrative review, yeah.
Okay. Well, we're still kind of undergunned if we have to do the.
There, there's still, there's definitely, there's still some finer points that in the rules and regulations that need to be, you know, fleshed out, I guess, under this, just to say, you know, we wanna ensure consistency, and I think that's what I'm hearing a little bit is part of the concern. So that, that's certainly the idea with the rules and regulations. And this is not something that, you know, we're just gonna write up the rules and regulations and then put that into effect. That's gonna go through a process as well. I'd very much anticipate bringing that before Planning Board, you know, before it goes to the Board of Selectmen for sign-off. So there will be time for input, um, and feedback on that as well.
So who, who is the authority that, when you go to change these bylaws, who does that change? The Selectmen, or do we change it?
My understanding was, sorry?
Or do you change it? Or does the Land Management Committee change it?
To actually change the language in this by law?
Yeah.
The proposed by law, if we, if we wanted to make any change to that, we could, like we're doing here, Land Management and DPW are cosponsoring this. You know, we would take that upon ourselves if, if in fact, we thought, you know, if Planning Board or whoever was giving us feedback and thought something indeed needed to be changed, we'd do the same process here, and we'd have to get it back in front of town meeting.
Okay. All right, so I think you were saying that it's really easy to revise this, but you still have to go back to the town meeting.
If we're, no. Yeah, I was talking to rules and regulations.
That's right, so.
The procedural portion, too.
Yes.
I don't know.
We could do the revisions, though, now.
Those could be done, those can be done by, uh, the boards themselves. This goes, this has to be, this, uh, Article nineteen is in our bylaws. The only way you can change that is to go in front of town meeting again.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jared.
You're, you're welcome.
Okay, so we're looking for a recommendation. We were in discussion. Were we, did I make, did it, did we make the recommendation?
I'll make the recommendation.
I don't know, I forgot.
Yeah, I'll make a recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Roger. Okay, any other discussion? Calling for a roll call vote, I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Christine?
Um, I hope you can hear me, yes.
Yeah, I heard you that time.
I, I took off my Bluetooth, so maybe it's gonna be better. Sorry about that.
Okay, yeah, you're stressing your system, huh? Okay, let's see. That was nineteen, and now we got twenty, which is, we get to it. Cluster development. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning by law by deleting Chapter thirteen, cluster development in its entirety and uncertain in its place thereof, the new Chapter thirteen, cluster development as follows, and it's, again, a full description of Chapter thirteen. And. I guess we sponsored it, I think the Planning Board sponsored this one too. It doesn't say it, but I think we did, anyway. So it's something we've been discussing.
Yeah.
Right, and you held a public hearing.
We held a public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion to recommend to town meeting, Article twenty.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? Being none, I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Greg?
I think I'm gonna abstain from this one.
Okay. Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Gary? Next article. Article twenty-one. See if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning by law, Chapter eleven, motor vehicle access, packing and lodging, by inserting the following section, which is three point one, off-street packing offset. Sponsored by the Planning Board. So pack, the, the, this allows businesses on Main Street to use frontage parking on the main thoroughfare in the breakdown lane to count towards their packing, uh, ability of the business, so.
So Richard, can I ask you a question on this? Um, so just a question, so if there's a business on Main Street and they wanna use, like, the Main Street for parking, will this give them permission to sign it for their business, or just, it's just for general use only?
They have a hundred, if they have a hundred feet of frontage, and let's say twenty feet per parking space, they could have five additional parking spaces of allowed parking.
So to count for, so to count for their business that they have to have so many parking places, right, that that could be part of their total amount allowed?
Yes.
Okay, but do they, but they can't, like, on Main Street, though, they can't sign it for their business, correct?
No, in fact, in fact, they're not even marked at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hey, Rich, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, we're talking about unsigned parking spaces along Main Street. Are we allowed to do that? Are we allowed to allow cars to park on Main Street, or is that our street, or does the Mass DPW have any say in how the parking goes on that, on Main Street?
They, you know? Always research that.
Yeah, we, um, the, the town owns and maintains Main Street from Front Street to Fairlon Street, essentially.
Okay.
So those, outside of those limits, it's, it's state layout.
Okay, 'cause I noticed, I know the state had a lot of regulations when we redid the center of town and type of parking, angled parking, not angled, and all that. I don't know, was that because they maintained the Main Street at that point, or just because we were spending their money?
Likely because we were spending their money, I, yeah. What, how long ago is this?
I wish I could remember. A long time ago.
Yeah, no, as far as I.
Nineteen nineties, two thousand.
Yeah, I have to imagine it was still town layout at that point, but it could have been some sort of state-funded project or something. That's a, that's my guess.
So what kind of parking, I'm sorry, what kind of parking, you know, the un, unmarked parking on Main Street, are we talking about parallel parking? Are we talking about straight-in parking? So are people gonna start parking straight in anywhere they want, or are they gonna park along the curb?
They're packing, they're packing, like, you know, going lengthwise with Main, with Main Street into, in the breakdown area. They're actually doing it today. I've got, whenever I go through that section of Main Street, there are people packing there.
Right, okay, so obviously you can't park, so you're butting into the, over the, uh, the white line on the side, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Greg, the, the whole point is parallel parking, and if you look in here, it has to do with the frontage, like, so, so say a person has a business, they have a hundred feet of parking on Main Street.
Yeah.
And say a business wants to move in downstairs, and they have an apartment upstairs, and we've actually had this happen. So they need two parking spaces for upstairs, they need one for each employee, so maybe they got three, and then they need, say, two for a customer. So they might need five parking spaces, and they're, on their lot, they only have enough to three. So under the current by law, we have to say, no, can't have your business. What this allows us to do is to look at the frontage. If they have a hundred feet of frontage, that gives them five more parking spaces that we're allowing them to do on our Main Street, that allows them to have their business. And it's restricted. It cannot be for residential parking. But, but, I mean, the whole point behind this is, is to improve more business and to let a lot of these small businesses come in on these smaller lots. So I mean, the whole point behind this is to improve more business and to let a lot of these small businesses come in on these smaller lots. If there's a sidewalk, a crosswalk there or a fly hydrant, they lose that parking space. But in terms of logistics and in terms of meeting that right number, we're able to do that. Those spaces though, are still can be used by anybody. It's not, it's not, and I think this answers your question, Chris. If somebody down the street wanted to use that parking spot, they can do it. The whole thing is we can get a general idea. It's the number of parking spaces that we have. And we can get an overall view as to what we're, you know, what we need. So if we have 150 parking spaces down Main Street, right now, we can't count any of those towards any business. It's just anybody. This helps us treat up a little bit of space so we can conduct our, you know, improve on getting some smaller businesses.
So I have another question. So Jared, as far as the parking on Main Street in this area, like during snowstorms and so forth, is there, is there a parking ban? Will the parking ban be in effect for these types of businesses?
I would say yes, that we would anticipate still enforcing that.
Okay. And so, so Norman, you mentioned that it's not for resident parking. It would be just for business parking?
That's right.
So who's going to, so who's going to gauge that? Like who's, is it the police that's going to patrol that to make sure that there's no resident parking?
I would say it would be the police, but think of this, all right? If someone's parked there all night long, you could pretty much agree to the fact that it's probably residential. During the day, again, you just drive up and down Main Street. You can tell if people are there all day or not. Not a lot of parking like that. It frees up the planning and it allows us to count the downtown parking that we have, but we can't count now. And this is done in many other towns by the way. You know, for some reason Oxford has never decided to use or to take the benefit of our public parking. So that's what it's about.
At the discussion. Make the motion. Are we in a motion? I forget.
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Getting late, you know.
I'll make a motion. We recommend this article.
Okay. Is there a second?
Charles.
Second, second by Roger. Okay. Okay. No more discussion? Okay. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Greg?
I vote yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Yes.
Jared, you unanimously. In the last, in the last article, Article 22, to see if the town will vote to amend the Oxford zoning bylaw, Chapter 6, Industrial Districts by inserting the following at the end of Table 3, which is Commercial Industry for Hotels, Motels and Country Mans, is a special permit with an asterisk, which means public hearing type special permit.
Special permit in sight.
Yep. Anyway, we had a public hearing on this. We reviewed this. This one's pretty straightforward. Any discussion? Entertain a motion?
Make that a motion.
Roger makes the motion to recommend a town meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
I heard Craig first.
Craig got it first.
No way.
You did. Okay. Any other discussion? There being none, I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
Jared unanimously. That takes care of the warrant articles. Okay. So we'll see you next Wednesday for the town meeting.
Thursday. Don't we have a meeting Thursday?
Yes.
Town a meeting, there is a, I'll let Tony talk to that. I've done enough talk. It's all yours, Tony.
I'll be really quick. So we have an informational workshop regarding 40B. Attorney John Witten from KP Law will be doing a presentation, going over roles, responsibilities of boards and commissions. This will be, it's a joint meeting between Board of Selectmen, Planning Board and ZBA. So I believe I did send out the link this afternoon, Thursday, April 29th at 6:00 PM. Also, we sent something else out regarding a previous workshop that was held last week, just some informational materials. And there's actually a recording of it as well, also relative to, to 40B Affordable Housing. And just two other quick things, if I may, Mr. Chairman. We will be moving forward this spring, applying for updating our Open Space Rec Plan. We've gotten some feedback from the state. We put an expression of interest under this new one-stop grant application process. And we will be applying to update our Open Space Rec Plan. We'll also be applying for Housing Production Plan, which, which will also be, will also be done this spring. And finally, we will also be applying for something called Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant. So that way Oxford gets not only a designation under the MVP, but really what does it mean? Comes with funding to, to assist the city, excuse me, to assist the town with sustainability measures, capital measures related to sustainability, sorry. And last but not least, we have a feasibility study that's out, request for proposals for the Oxford Community Center. So the town is now seeking proposals from interested firms and so on that they'll be interested in doing a feasibility study of the OCC, which, you know, was one of the priorities of the, of the master plan. And looking forward, we expect to get those proposals. Deadline is May 13th. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, for tonight. And hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll see you all or most of you on Thursday.
Hey, Tony, what's the password for that? Can you email? I didn't get it. I got the ID number, but I didn't get the password. Can you send that to me?
Sure, sure. And I'll go back and double check. I'm not sure if Board of Selectmen included a password, but I will check on that in the morning with, with Dee.
Okay.
All right.
You can click on the link and it'll bring you right there, usually.
Yes.
I got the, I got the ID number. I just don't have it.
Yeah. I think, I think they do their setup a little different and that's probably what you saw, but I'll verify that tomorrow and I'll, I'll circulate an email.
Cause I'll be on my own Thursday night. My technician won't be around.
Anyway, it's, it's basically, it's, it's the ZBA's ball when it comes to 40B. We have very little input that we could do. We could input for the ZBA from a technical point of view, if they needed anything in particular. We think they need anything in particular. We can, we could send them a memo type thing or and help them out, but it's totally a ZBA-driven process. Anyway, Norman, go ahead.
I think Christine's back.
Oh, I'm back. That's right. Thank you. Thank you, Norman. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I would like to second it.
Thank you, Norman.
Roll call. Vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Okay. And thank you, Jared, for all your. All the.
Thank you, Jared.
Very welcome. My pleasure.
Thank you.